Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners meeting for February the 18th. Good evening, Madam Commissioners.
Good evening.
We're going to start out our meeting as we always do with silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance. And I would ask that everyone think of the sheriff deputy whose service we went to yesterday. Sheriff Officer Deputy Donald Galris III, who just recently passed away. If we could have a moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
And justice. For all. Thank you. Well, I would like to welcome Mayor Mark Cobusus. And thank you for inviting us into the Village of Newtown. And I think you may have a few people with you or may just be you. And we're glad to be here. You're actually the first evening meeting that we're having. You were on the list last year, and so we were not able to do that. So, welcome, and I'd like for you to tell us a little bit about Newtown.
Okay, let me thank you very much for inviting me. I greatly appreciate it. And let me mention a few more thank yous. I want to thank the Commissioners for sending some COVID-19 relief funds to local communities such as Newtown. I believe Commissioner Dreehouse led this effort last year, and the funds have really helped the village pay for PPE and first responder pay. The funds were greatly appreciated. I want to thank you for sending that money to the local communities.
Mayor, I'll just correct the record and say it was all three Commissioners. Yeah, just to make, clear the record. Thank you.
Okay, I don't mean to leave anybody out. I just, Tom Signan indicated you had led that effort, but I thank all three of you.
Yeah.
I want to thank the Commissioners also for reducing Hamilton County communication fees. These fees went from $17 per call to $5 per call. It might be a small matter to you, but it really helped our police budget, and I want to thank you again for thinking of local communities. And finally, I am going to call out you, Commissioner Dreehouse, for your work on the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. I know you work closely with Village Police Chief Tom Signan. He had a break our, break away from our council meeting last week for a meeting, and I know you commit a lot of time to that. That's very important work, and I thank you for that. Now, let me say a few words about Newtown. A lot of exciting things happening in the village. For anyone ever stuck in Newtown rush hour traffic, Hope and Change is on the way. The Ohio Department of Transportation has proposed traffic improvement plans for the village. Council is completely behind those plans. You can look at those plans on the easterncorridor.org link. The comment period is open. It's open until March 22nd. The most exciting thing is a bike pedestrian trail that is proposed for connecting much of the village. So that's a very exciting thing. We are going to get a Tangilo's Bar and Pizzeria. The restaurant's going to sit on a four acre campus and be the gateway to Newtown from Route 50 and Worcester Pike. We're very excited about that. Meridian Bioscience, the largest employer in the village, is expanding in the village. They're going to add state-of-the-art production lines for making COVID-19 test kits. The expansion's going to create 45 jobs in the village. And it's made possible by Jobs, Ohio, Ready, Cincinnati, and Newtown. Very exciting project. Even during COVID-19, a lot of things are really coming together in the small village of Newtown. The Moats Group, a nationally known installer of synthetic turf fields, is expanding its headquarters in the village. This employee-owned company has installed over 500 fields globally and holds global patents. The Campus Lake headquarters will retain the company in Newtown and bring in new jobs. I guess the most unusual project we have in the village is a garage condominium complex. This is a condo for affluent car collectors. These units sell for $150,000 to $300,000 per condo unit. Most people I know paid that for a home, but these are car condos. They each have their own bathroom, office, very high-end finishes. And I think it's going to be the first one in its, of its kind in Hamilton County. We approved the site plans because, well, the lot didn't really, wasn't usable. It had power lines above it, gas line underneath, sewage lines, and so the lot really was conducive to allowing this project. So we hope it's going to bring affluent people in. And, and finally, a little-known fact about Newtown is we have one of the largest lakes in Hamilton County. Lake Barber is a 50-acre lake surrounded by a public walking trail of about 1.5 miles. So after you do your workout in the village, you can dine at our restaurants. We have Urban Grill, Main Street Cafe, Village Pizza, and soon, Tangilo's Bar and Pizzeria. So with that, I'd like to invite the Commissioners to lunch with me in the village. I've hosted Todd Fortune and Chris Monzell, and I hope you each come out and visit Newtown. Happy to show you and talk about how we can work together. So, thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate it. It's been an honor. Any questions?
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for the invitation. I will take you up on that. I'm going to allow our other Commissioners to make some comments, and then I have a final comment. Vice President Alicia Reese, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to say, Mayor, thanks for welcoming us to Newtown Day. And looking forward to coming out. I'm the newest member, but I'm looking forward to coming out to the new pizzeria and having some great lunch and dialogue with you, only if you will throw in a candy cane.
Okay, I'll make sure. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you out, Commissioner Reese.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. It's so, so glad to see you. So sorry that we're not there in person. Maybe in another time we'll be able to do that again. So thanks for the invite. I too will come out. I haunt the Urban Grill with Tom Signan. As you may know, the police chief out there, that's where we get together and talk about all things Newtown. So it'll be my pleasure to come out again and go there, the Urban Cafe, and lunch with you. That'd be, that would be great. So thank you for your hospitality. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
And I would just like to say I'm just really happy we were able to reduce those detailed fees. We knew it would be helpful, and in addition, that we were able to allocate some CARES money, funding for you guys. And I think of what, all the things that you were saying that's going on, and I'm thinking small but mighty, because I was looking up your demographics, and you have a little over 2,600 people. Maybe it's growing more, but I was saying for all those things to be going on in such a small village is just really a testament to the people that are committed to Newtown. So I just want to thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a good business base, a good police force, just a good nucleus of people in the village, and want to keep that momentum going. So thanks for all you're doing for us.
Thank you. You can stay on if you want, but you don't have to. Okay, all right. Thank you. We'll move on to our next order of business, which is approval of the minutes of the previous session. I'd like, like to make a motion for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Ms. Ramadumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And Bridget, do we have anybody on the line for public comments that you can see?
Not at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. So we'll move on to comments and motions from our Commissioners. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one thing. I wanted to say that the Economic Recovery and Relief Task Force is moving along, and we're hoping to be able to have a new one-stop portal that will be able to share, hopefully by the beginning of March, so that we'll have a place where people could go to one location and hopefully be able to better navigate. So excited about that. Also, I just want to take this moment to wish Edgar Malcolm from my office, he's on tonight, and it's his birthday. So he's celebrating his birthday night.
Yes. Happy birthday, Edgar. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Happy birthday, Edgar. Nice. What a great way to spend your birthday, huh? Thank you. Yeah, I just have one thing. I wanted to let everyone know. So we've talked quite a bit in the last week about equity when it comes to vaccine distribution in Hamilton County. And so, wow, the Health Commissioner offered his report. I thought it was very well done. And they are striving to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to get the vaccine in Hamilton County. And so we have, are on a call, as you both know, every other week with the Governor and his team. And so last time we were on, I promised that we would do an aggregate document from all the metro counties throughout the state, because we're all doing the same kind of work around equity, put it all together, and get it to the Governor's team so that we can make sure that as additional doses of vaccine become available, we are the kind of the tip of the spear, because we are the ones that are able, because of our history and our location in the county, able to distribute that vaccine in an equitable way as a partner with the state. So that letter will probably go out tonight after this meeting. All the counties, all the metros, offered their equity plans. I've offered the one that Greg, you know, showed to us the other day. And so we will hopefully see additional doses as they become available to make sure the public health is, again, at the tip of the spear when it comes to vaccine distribution throughout the county. So just wanted to alert both of you to the, the idea that the letter's going to go up there tonight.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have a few comments this evening. First of all, as I mentioned earlier, all three Commissioners did attend the services for the deputy, and so we, our thoughts will be with the family. In addition, I attended OKI, the Board of Directors meeting last week, and we're looking at transportation issues. Hamilton County is high on the list as it relates to funding. And so it always has been, and it continues to be. As President, I'm now on the Executive Committee, and so I'll have even more impact as it relates to what Hamilton County needs in relation, a relationship to transportation. In addition, the 2021 Annual Meeting of SWRWhIP, which is a Workforce Investment Board, I was able to swear in eight members, one of which Vice President Reese will be representing the Kish Commission for that board, and so I welcomed her in, and I'm sure she'll do great things on that board. And so had to let some things go, and that was one of them, because it works so, so very hard. In addition, I attended the Cincinnati Visitors Board meeting, and now on their executive board as we look at equity and inclusion, and how do we encourage people to come back to Hamilton County and the ones that are here to get more involved? So I'm looking forward to what that may end up developing for Hamilton County as we look at a campaign that they're looking at starting in Hamilton County. And so I also was involved in a proclamation for the love of transportation, sorta, was doing that on Friday, and I presented a proclamation to them, because we know Issue 7 passed as it relates to transportation and expansion of not only downtown area but also the suburban area. So I was very happy to be able to do that. And in addition, NACO, the National Association for Commissioners, had a briefing today with the White House. It'll be a bi-weekly briefing, and so I know I didn't talk to President Biden, but there were some people on the, on the line from all over our state and nationally to talk about the COVID vaccinations and how we're going to get more of those vaccination app, out, the diversity that is needed to make sure everybody is included. And then I heard that the Biden Administration will be sending monies to counties for infrastructure. And so we were told that to start looking, and we already have, look at infrastructure that we need additional monies for. They did not indicate how much money it would be, but we need to actively start looking at a list for that purpose. So that will end my comments, and we'll move on to our County Administrator Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. No comments or by leaves today, other than just to share with the Board on behalf of the Administration condolences to Deputy Gilworth's family and friends and all of his colleagues over at the Sheriff's Office as well. So I know the Commissioners were able to make it to the services. I just wanted to pass along our condolences on behalf of County Administration as well. Aside from that, Madam President, no comments or by leaves today.
Thank you so much. So we will move on to our regular agenda items. Eric Beck is here, and I had said before we came on the air, and we've said this before, as it relates to the snowstorm and the ice and everything that we've received. I've gotten good reports, and I know we have a hard-working staff. And so I wanted to thank you, Eric, and also to communicate to them that we certainly appreciate their long hours. So I'll hand it over.
Thank you very much. They definitely have put in a lot of hours. And I appreciate being here virtually with, in Newtown. I also want to point out that one of our maintenance, three maintenance facilities is in Newtown. So we have a great working relationship with Newtown and hope that continues. We have six items in front of the Board tonight. Item, the first item is a renewal of a snow and ice agreement with the, with Ohio Department of Transportation to perform snow and ice operations on the non-interstate roadways in the unincorporated area. This is a two-year extension. The current agreement expires in end of May of this year. This would extend it for two more years. The County Engineers' Office is compensated by the state for the work it performs. The second item is plans and estimates being submitted to you. Yes.
Eric, why don't we just move through each one, and I can make a motion to adopt?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and as you were talking, Eric, I remember, Mayor, that I was listening on the news about you have a huge salt bin in Newtown. They were talking about.
We do, Commissioner.
Yes, that's what I heard.
And it's very fortunate how they allow us to store salt there. So we do have a great working relationship with the County Maintenance Building there. We really appreciate them in Newtown.
Yes. Okay. Any questions from Vice President Alicia Reese on item number one?
No, I think considering what's going on with the snow and ice, I think we're ready to pass item number one.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the nice renewal addendum to the snow and ice between Hamilton and the State of Ohio Department of Transportation ODOT Agreement, number 12463H.
Second.
Ms. Ramadumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is plans and estimates to allow us to go to bid for the improvements to New Haven Road in Crosby Township. Engineer's estimate is 422,000. There are no county funds involved. This is a school improvement, and the school district is paying for the turn lanes being added to New Haven Road.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
No comments. I think we've had this before, before the Board.
Correct.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two.
Second.
Ms. Dree, Ms. Ramadumas?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the, the next item is a joint agreement between Hamilton County and Harrison Township. This will allow us to apply for OPWC funds for improvements on Howard Road from Lees Creek Road to Butler County Line. Should we get these funds? We're asking for 50% from OPWC. The county would pay the other 50%, and that would come out of the engineers' restricted funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Questions?
Okay. And I was glad to see, as you were saying, Eric, that 50% of the funding, if we get it, would be from OPWC. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number three.
Second.
Ms. Ramadumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the, it's titled the 2020 Resurfacing Program Phase Two. This will actually be our first resurfacing program for this year. It was delayed last year due to COVID, the downfall in the revenue. So we put off the phase two. This is for paving on Nordike Road, School Road, Sidney Road, and park, our parking lot at our Galbert Road facility. The funding will all come out of the County Engineers' Road and Bridge Fund.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? I know I was looking at this myself, and I was saying that that's a pretty large number, almost 1.7. And then I saw the various areas that were going to be covered, so. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number four.
Second.
Ms. Ramadumas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is to accept the bids for Markley Road and Zion Hill Road landslide stabilizations located in Anderson and Miami Townships. The engineer's estimate was 471,607. A low bidder was W.E. Smith at $445,181.25. The, this is a FEMA-funded project.
Thank you. And so do we normally overestimate to see what comes in? I was really excited when I read that it was the bid.
We, yeah, typically when we do our engineer's estimate, we like to be in the middle. We, we don't want to be the lowest. We try to get our price somewhere in the middle of where the bidders are.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number five.
Second.
Ramadumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, one, one last item is a engineering agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services to prepare engineering plans for the improvements to Hillside Road. It's just a landslide and stabilized area. The maximum amount is not to exceed $156,161. This is for engineering services, and it will come out of road and bridge funds.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay. I'd like, Commissioner Dreehouse?
No questions.
I thought I heard, oh, that was, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number six.
Second.
Ramadumas?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
I suddenly thought I was on mute. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Eric.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you, yeah. Okay, we will move then to consent agenda items. I just wanted to do just a little short summary. We have consent agenda items number seven through 38. And just a short summary, the ten items include engineer office projects, site readiness for Port Authority. JFS placements are really the majority of the monies that are indicated here. And also, there's a settlement between the sheriff and the county. And also, two navigators for Task Force for the Herion, Heroin Task Force. There are two navigators, and there is no cost to that. They're from grants. So that, that's just a summary of a number of items seven through 38, but I will open it up. Vice President Reese, did you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. Item number 13 is an item that deals with purchase order funding of $2 million for the Port of Greater Cincinnati Development Authority. This was brought to us in a package, I believe, last month. And I had asked if we could separate the $2 million out and have a chance to meet with the Port Authority. And I did get a chance to do that with Administrator Jeff Aludo's office. I know that they still don't have the actual plan on what they would be spending this $2 million on. And so what we did was put some new language in here that the administration, I want to thank them. We worked with the administration to get the right language, specifically, I want to thank Holly for that. And we came back with language that would allow me to support the $2 million put aside for the purchase order, but also would put an amendment that would come back to us into their contract that says before the money can be received, we would at least know what those projects are. We'll have the final set of what those projects are. I just think that's a way to increase transparency, and I just want to thank the administration for working with my office and specifically my chief of staff, Quinton Monroe, and our legal team, Michael. Thank you so much, and I think we've got language now that I can support and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yeah, no, I have, I'm fine with the additional language. The projects, from my understanding, do come back to us. This is simply an allocation to make sure that we are moving on-site-ready parcels throughout the county so that we're ready for development. So I, but I have no problem with the language, because I think it's just a clarification to a process that we've been engaged in. So, okay with that. I want to draw some attention to item number nine, which is the consultant for the children's services levy. Just, I noted only because we've got the TLRC meeting right now related to this really important levy, and so I know that it's of interest to all three of us. And so I just want to say thank you, as always, to the TLRC for their work, and grateful that we've got this in front of us to, you know, continue moving along with that process to get that work concluded, so we have a recommendation from them.
Yes.
I just want to get clarification, and maybe Michael, our attorney, can clarify. Because when I read through the contract, it did not say that those projects had to come back to us. I just want to make sure that, you know, that is the intent. Because I did ask, was that the process, but the, but the contract did not state that. So I just wanted to make sure that the contract states what the, what the intent is, because I was not familiar with that. So just want to make sure, Michael, is that correct? Is that what this is?
Commissioner, are you referring to the item with the port?
Yes.
Yes, I believe the, the language in there indicates that the administration is to work with the port to amend their contract. That amendment will have to come back before the Board, and I believe that there's indication there as well that as part of that, and obviously, the Board can dictate how they'd like to make that amendment, but certainly, if the Board wishes to have them come back with projects, either the initial amendment or the amendment and any further projects that come forward, they can do so through doing that.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm voting on the right things. When I read the original contract that's signed into, they don't have to come back to us. But this will allow us to have a new amendment to the contract that guarantees that that happens. So thank, thank you very much. I just wanted to.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ramadumas?
Yes.
Real quick, it's been a long time since we've done a travel item, but typically, we, we vote for the consent agenda items, and then the travel item is a separate item. So I believe that's 38. So if you want to move for the consent agenda items, seven through 37, and then a separate move for our motion for number 38.
Okay, certainly. Thanks, Michael. Okay, and I just wanted to make a comment as regards to the consent agenda items. I would say 99% of them have numbers, dollars, connected to them that are on our sheet, on our agenda. I want everybody, whoever looks on the website, when they look up these items, they're able to see the numbers. So I say 98, 99% have the numbers, but if we could make sure, I think. So I say ninety eight, ninety nine percent have the numbers, but if we could make sure, I think environmental services was one that did not have the numbers. So I looked it up. So if we can just make sure all the numbers are attached. Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items seven through thirty seven.
Second.
Your Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. And I would also like to make a motion to adopt item thirty eight.
Second.
Your Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. So I will ask at this time if there if there is anything else to come before the commission, Vice President Reese.
Yes, Madam President. This week I was able to host a virtual town hall. And I do want to thank those who participated, starting with Governor Dewine, N double A C P President Joe Mallory, Mr. Lagerin, who is UC Health, as well as Renee Mahapi Harris, and our Health Commissioner Kesterman. And there was pretty much this kind of help to answer questions. People had been calling, and they were able to ask those questions directly. So I want to thank them for participating in that. And we were able to also solve a couple of issues that some misunderstandings that people had. But also, just following up what you were saying, and Commissioner Dre House, the equity question is really big. And we communicated that directly to the governor. So I'm very hopeful when we get the doses, we're able to have them in an equitable way. But I also brought up the issue of us being able to have flexibility with MSD. And because of state law, we don't have the flexibility. And and indicated that it would be great if he would have an amendment to his budget because of the COVID times and the tough economic times, that would allow us to have the authority to help bring some of those costs down, which all three of us want to do, but because of state law, our hands are tied. And he indicated to have an openness to that. And so I'm working, I just want to let everyone know that I'm working. Our board, we are all working with the administration so that we could get something to him and see if there's something that we might be able to get, even if it's the temporary thing into the budget to help citizens lower their So I just wanted to indicate, I thought that was very positive.
Well, that's awesome. If he's just being willing to listen, that's a great thing. So thank you. Commissioner Dre House?
Yeah, just one one last note. And we highlighted the two positions that are grant funded. And so I just wanted to let the mayor know that those two positions are for the Addiction Response Coalition. And they're for folks that are going to help us reach out to those that have overdosed and get them into treatment. So Tom Signan had a lot to do with all of that. And so I know you know this, but Tom has been just such an advocate on the Addiction Response Coalition. He's been such a champion, and I just know that you appreciate that work. I know we do. Because he's just a real gem. And so anyways, thank you for letting us work so closely with him. And we just passed something that is a product of a lot of his efforts. So thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, I mean, I think you might be the first person who had something to say, and they stayed on for the whole meeting.
I just want to say, Madam President, you run a very efficient meeting. When I saw your agenda, I thought I'd be here till eight thirty. I wish my council meetings were so efficient. I'm very impressed.
Thank you. We have a great team. So thank you. With all that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.